Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of March 17th, 2021. As we begin our meeting, I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being streamed live, a broadcast live, and it is also being recorded for use at a later date if needed. Thank you very much. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice. Thank you. Also, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. We're going to open up public comment. Jeff?
As of this moment, Mr. Chair, Bob, there's nobody on, so I would say proceed through.
We'll wait a few minutes and...
We could proceed on, and if somebody comes on, I'll hold them, and we can revisit that if they pop in in the next minute or so.
Okay. Superintendent's report, and we're going to hear from the auditors, so I'm assuming they are here.
Correct. So, Mr. Tuffy, are our guests here?
They are. I think as the committee knows, we're scheduled to have the auditors come in and give us the final report presented to the committee, and then our district treasurer, David Leary, will come and speak for a few minutes as well. So we'll start with our auditors or auditor, Jennifer Cook from the firm CLA, who is the signing director. Yes. And actually heads up the audit team that reviews our books.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me. So you should all have the presentation in front of you, so I'll just start going through that, and feel free to stop me if you have any questions throughout. So, on page three, I just want to talk about what the terms of the engagement were as part of the audit. To express an opinion on the financial statements, to express and...
I'm sorry.
Talk louder.
Yeah, I was going to say, can you...
Yep.
Feel free.
Yep. Okay. To express an opinion on the financial statements, that it's in accordance with GAAP, to express an in relation to the financials on the Schedule of Federal Awards, express an opinion on compliance with the federal major programs. We also provided a report on internal control over financial reporting, and we provided a report on internal control over compliance related to the federal programs. In addition, when warranted, we provide a management letter based on any findings during the audit.
Just for everyone that's watching, would you explain that you're an independent auditing company and how that goes on, because there are times when people discuss audits and they don't think the district is being audited?
Right. And yes, so we are completely independent, and we are required by standards to be independent of the district so that there is no bias or views from the public that there is bias in our evaluation.
So, again, to repeat, you're an independent auditing company that we pay independently for you. You do not work for the district.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. So just a high-level executive summary. We issued and distributed the final financial statements on February 26, and you should have received that, I believe, at your last meeting. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. Regarding the internal control report, we did not identify anything that rose to a material weakness or significant deficiency, which would be a concern surrounding the internal controls. And then on our single audit over the major programs, federal spending, we did not have any findings there, and we audited one major program.
When you mean... I'm going to be jumping in and asking some questions in the committee this evening.
Absolutely.
When you talk about federal spending, you audit exactly how we spend every cent that's given to us from the federal government, is that...
So, what we get is a Schedule of Federal Awards, and so it's a risk-based audit. So, I believe you spent a little over $2 million in federal award money, and we evaluate based on risk and which programs should be audited. So we do not audit every single many, but in our report, we tell you which programs we audited, and we'll evaluate whether they were allowable under the grant within the period of performance of the grant and if we identify any compliance programs.
Thank you.
Next is financial highlights. I just, I like to bring up a few things just so that you're aware. The statement of net position, which is on page nine, just draw attention, I think really the unrestricted deficit, when you're looking at from a government-wide perspective, is 108 million. And just so that, you know, the average reader of the financials understands that the majority of all of that deficit relates to your OPEB benefit and your pension. So, OPEB is everything except for your pension benefits, health insurance, dental, and then your pension liability. So, under accounting standards, you need to report the full liability, and it really drives this, a deficit showing in the district's financial statement. The next is the governmental funds. This is a more clearer picture. This is more on a modified accrual basis, so you don't have these long-term liabilities, so you can truly see from almost the cash basis where the district is performing. So just from a major fund perspective, they always have a general fund, which is your general operations, and then the two major funds this year, where it's the Hanson Middle School, HVAC, and you'll see that a deficit was showing there, and that relates to the bond anticipation notes. So because they represent the liability, it looks like you're in deficit, but until that gets paid down or converted to long-term, it'll show a deficit in that fund. And then on note two is the full listing of fund deficits at the end of the year. No concerns there. There was two related to band anticipation notes, and then one deficit related to COVID with the timing of when reimbursements are going to come. The next is the general fund.
I'm sorry, I understand. It says note two. Is that like a reference within this document?
Yes, note two within the financial statement.
Okay.
So not note two in this presentation, but in the financial statements that you got last.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So next is kind of the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the district, is looking at the fund balance. I know we talked about this briefly last meeting, and looking at your unassigned fund balances, and it's continuing to grow up, which is a good trend. I know we talked about the excess and deficiency. You know, it's limited to 5%. If it's over 5%, you need to return to member communities. So right now, 5% of your budget would be 2.6 million. Right now, your E and D is about 600,000, but however, it is continuing to grow up, so that's a good trend. So, the next one is note 10. This is the OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. I'd just like to draw attention to this note. So the liability currently is 103 million compared to 97 million in the prior year, and this is really driving from changes in assumptions. So the discount rate last year was 3%, and this year it's 2.75%, so it's driving the liability up, and this can vary from year to year in changing assumptions in that. The next page really kind of shows you how the swing in that liability can be if you change the discount rate 1% higher, 1% lower, so it kind of gives you that range of how that liability will be impacted with different scenarios. Same thing with pension. That one went down a little bit from the prior year. Again, changes in discount rate went up on that one slightly. So, nothing concerning there. Same thing, discount rates. So, the next page, page 12, is the GAO report, which is the report over internal controls. And like I said, there was nothing that we identified that was a significant deficiency or material weakness. That doesn't mean that there one doesn't exist, it's just nothing that came to our attention based on the procedures that we perform. So the next is the single audit report, and as I said, it was $2 million in federal expenditures, and we tested the special education program, which is the majority of that spending, and we issued an unmodified opinion, and there was no findings related to that program. The last item is management letter. We did not issue a formal letter only because these are repeat findings for informational purposes. So there are two really big upcoming GASB standards. The fiduciary activities, which will change the way agency funds in your financials were previously reported, and lease accounting. So, because of the pandemic, the implementation of the fiduciary activities, which is GASB 84, was supposed to be this fiscal year, and they pushed it off a year. So we'll be working with the district this summer to implement that standard, and then the least standard is fiscal 2022. So that's all I wanted to cover, and I'll open it up for any questions.
Do you have any questions? Dawn?
How many federal award programs could you audit? I know you said you picked one, the special ed, but you make reference that you only audited one, so how many?
So, in the GAO and OMB report that you have, on page six, that'll give a whole picture of all the programs that were expended under, so the 2.47. So, anything over 750,000, we are required to audit unless it's deemed to be low risk. And then everything else is, we've evaluated whether it's a higher-risk program or if it's new to the district, and so like I said, it's a very risk-based approach. Sometimes federal agencies will require and deem it higher risk, and we'll have to audit, and there's nothing on your Schedule of Federal Awards that would be...
Okay. So the decision on what to audit comes from regulations or what you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Great. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. See you next year.
Mr. Tuffy? Mr. Leary? So we get our annual visit from your district treasurer. You may remember him, and for the people who are new, we do have a district treasurer. His name is David Leary, and he's going, has a few comments to make, and that'll conclude this portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. Very brief report. Just wanted to mention that the high school bond outstanding on this building is $4,170,000 as of June 30, 2020. We had some short-term debt outstanding for technology needs. That was scheduled to be paid off and was paid off in October of 2020. We have $1,175,000 outstanding for HVAC system in fiscal year 20. We were scheduled, we estimated $50,000 in investment income. We actually got 75,471. So that extra $25,000 will cook out to E and D, and it can be used for whatever purpose you appropriate it for. And that's all I have. Any questions? Questions? Anyone?
Chair.
Dawn?
I just wanted to ask about our outstanding OPEB liability that the auditors just made reference to, and I know some, the towns have OPEB liability as well, and they contribute to putting...
Yeah, the district... Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you. District has appropriated, I think we've appropriated $35,000, maybe a little bit more than that, and that's invested with Plymouth County. I can get you...
Okay. My question is, do you have any insight on whether it would be wise to contribute a small amount on an annual basis to that outstanding liability?
I think anything you contribute is good. It's just a matter of you have the available funds to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Fred?
And just, we have been contributing to our OPEB, and I want to thank Mr. Tuffy for this information, as it came up in discussion just last night. We have been contributing. So we currently have $265,430.57 as of February 28 in an OPEB toward our OPEB liability with Plymouth County in their account in the OPEB trust.
And I stand corrected, I think we've contributed $125,000.
Okay. I'm just going off of the...
I think the rest of it is accrued investment.
Right. So that's with investments, et cetera, but our total balance in the account is 265,430.57.
Okay. Dawn?
Through you, Chair, too.
Go ahead.
Mr. Small, do you have information on the last time from the operating budget we contributed?
I don't have the schedule. You know, just a simple balance. We were curious and talking and...
I think it was two or three years ago that we had available funds.
I don't remember putting anything in the year we came in because we cut.
Right.
And then last year, we didn't have time to look in. I think if we want to look at moving either from the operating budget or based upon what we end up putting into E and D this spring, if we don't have to touch E and D for the fiscal '22 budget, depending on what we balance out in October or the summer, might be something for the committee to appropriate. But I don't think under my superintendency, we were able to actually contribute because we were already behind the ball, so to speak, when we were doing FY '20 and FY '21.
If I'm not mistaken, from '16, '17, '18, it was 15,000 here, 20,000 there.
It was small amounts.
Right. You know, very small amounts. It doesn't add up to a whole ton of money, but it's something.
But it can grow over time, too.
Sure. Yes.
Thank you.
I think the initial... Anyone else have any questions today?
Dave?
Can you explain, what does the $265,000 on Pulp, what does that go to? What is that for?
Any more would it be spent for?
Yes.
Post-employment health benefits for retirees. But you're looking at a 30 to 40-year timeframe before you would want to, you would touch that. Because you have an obligation, and you have X number of years to raise and appropriate to meet that obligation.
Thank you.
So the hope is that in 20, 30, 40 years, you've got several million dollars there to cover those expenses. Anyone else?
Just a...
Go ahead, Dan.
We did have Plymouth County, they came in three, four years ago, gave us an OPEB overview, and that's the last time we donated. And when we donated at that time, we were one of the first to actually put money in there out of the county. That was three or four years ago, it was a whole night, maybe two nights' worth of...
I think it was 35,000, too, Dan, for some reason that sticks in my head.
The original was 25,000, 35,000, but this has just been minuscule amounts since then.
Yeah, because we've just, we've been going negative, not positive, so we had no money to put in.
Means 265,000 against 103 million. You know.
Anyone else? David, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll proceed right to the North River Collaborative report. Really, this doesn't acquire a vote of the committee, but I'll read you the letter I received. On March 5, 2021, the North River Collaborative Board, which I'm on, voted to increase the limit of the capital reserve to 1,250,000 from 700,000. The purpose of the capital reserve account is to make repairs or upgrades to existing facilities or purchase new facilities to enhance programming for the collaborative. The capital reserve account may only be used for these reasons. The collaborative is in the process of hiring an architect to add classrooms to the old route, at the North River School. According to 603 CMR 50.07, which was adopted by the Board of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education on January 29, 2013, requires that when a collaborative board of directors revises its capital plan, they must also provide notice to member districts. Here is notice. The only requirement per the above regulation is notice, and a vote is not required of the committee unless the member district disapproves of the plan. The regulations state that if the member district does not vote to disapprove the revised plan within a 45-day period, the member shall be deemed to have approved the revised capital plan. So I'm making you aware as the school committee, unless you disapprove of this plan, you won't have to, you would vote to disapprove it, and I would bring it back to the board of directors.
Fred?
Do we know how many members are in the collaborative and what Whitman-Hanson's share of that increase is?
Do I know what our share of the, what they do is, it's the capital reserve, so in their tuitions, and I don't know how much we contribute to North River Collaborative in their tuitions, and it's like their E and D account. It's their capital reserve account.
Mr. Bush?
If you don't mind, just knowing from Pilgrim area, we have an eight and a half million dollar budget, and there is, you know, we have something similar, be it a line item or whatever, that can be distributed amongst many incoming enrollments, and the money's collected for that. So say there's several kids that are from outside of the member districts. Those kids, whatever money's come from their enrollment, could be a part of that because it's an overall part of the budget picture. So it's not necessarily broken down by each member town.
I mean, my concern is, are we going to see a separate assessment for that increase?
No.
Or do they do it by tuition?
My guess from sitting at the board, it was built in, the reason they need to expand their capital reserve is to do modifications to the school. They don't have the capital to do that, so maybe they increase tuitions. Lauren, do you know if the collaboratives increased their tuitions this year?
I don't know if the final numbers, but they do every year.
Every year it goes up, but I don't know the percentage of that increase, what would go into capital reserve. I'm not sure.
Can we verify that we're not going to receive a separate assessment?
Sure. So we get, I'm giving you notice, we have 45 days. If you choose not to vote on this, we can bring it up at another meeting, so I'll get that information for you.
Okay. That's fine.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Bob, could I...
Chris?
I just made a quick point, so, because you just hit on it, right? So I looked at some rough numbers. They only had the 2019 report posted. I know we got it a couple months ago, but rough numbers, I think their operating budgets around 16 million or so, maybe a little bit more now, and they have, you know, this capital stabilization fund of 1 and 1/4 million, so 8% or so roughly, if you look at operating budget and what they have in there. And then you compare that to our $50 million budget and our $600,000 in E and D, which is roughly 1%. So I think, no, I have no problem with them being fiscally responsible, but I think it does support some of the conversations we've had when we talk about our E and D, that it's probably woefully inadequate when we think about trying to be financially prudent. I mean, we just heard the auditor talk about we could have up to, what was it, 2.6 million in there? So I have no problem what they're doing, but I think it's just important, because I know sometimes we get some pressure from some folks of, hey, spend E and D, spend E and D, spend E and D. If you look at what the towns have, if you look at what North River Collaborative is doing, I think they're all being pretty wise with how they manage that, so we may want to consider kind of doing the same thing as we proceed to make sure we build up that E and D going forward. So, I think it's just a good, a good point around that.
I'll get you that information. I'll get the committee the rest of that information. Next meeting we have, I'll ask Steve where we're at.
Okay. Everybody, anyone else? Okay.
Briefly on our re-entry update, as you know, we're still scheduled to go April 5th, grades one through 12. Want to give a shout out to facilities. They've been doing a great job of putting desks in classrooms, setting up the desks, showing principals what it looks like at three feet apart. Our assistant principals will be measuring to assist our school nurses where desks are at horizontally, vertically, and diagonally, so they can assist in contact tracing, so we're not blowing out a whole class if a student has positive. They will be doing that prior to students coming back. And I also just wanted to highlight, got a phone call from the town of Whitman. If George, you want to speak about the desks, or I can just speak about the desks. Whitman is covering the Whitman Middle School desk issue, the trap tables, through their CARES program. So Whitman reached out to us after our last school committee meeting, said, hey, look, we can help you, we'll dig in and, you know, make the purchase, and we'll refund you. So Whitman's taking care of the desks at Whitman Middle School. They're on order, and we should be good to go on April 5. So I just wanted to say thank you. That was unsolicited by us. They are watching out there, which is awesome, and they picked up on our need and assisted us. George, you want to add anything?
Sure. I have some notes. I will. I didn't see them. No.
Not only they watch them.
Yeah. So if we just, if we just highlight a couple of the challenges that we had again, the time period for changing the method of instruction that you were going to do for your child has passed. That was last Wednesday. That is a hard date, but that was last Wednesday. There have been significant changes, not significant, there have been insignificant changes, I should say, that have taken place at the school. And what does a change mean? That means that we did not ask any parent to let us know if their child was just moving from hybrid into now fully inclusive, a full-day program. We only asked if you were going to make a change from into a remote or from a remote into a fully in-person. So we've had those changes, it's worked out pretty well, and class size is still relatively low at the lower grades. There is one bump that we're still working through at one of the schools in a second grade class, but we have a plan that hopefully we're working through to keep that at about 22. The high school does have some challenges still in some of the sections from the students that are coming back, challenges that can be met, but I would, right now, what we're looking to do, if you remember the memorandum of understanding that we had, where it said we're going to look for six feet and settle for three, so in some of those sections, we're looking to see where we can get a little bit different areas for some classes to go so we can keep that, especially in our form and language classes and a couple of our AP classes. I would also like to mention that there were 314 bus change requests as of yesterday. And, but, of those bus change requests, I would like to thank the community, because most of them, 98% of them were, I just want to confirm, I'm driving my child. So they took the time, they took the opportunity. So what it looks like on a lot of our bus routes is two to a seat, and the bus routes look manageable. Middle school is usually the highest amount of students that ride the bus, and sometimes those 72-capacity bus routes were at 72 with three to a seat. Now, it does not look like that that's going to happen. I do want to also let you know that parents always look up, I think Dawn asked a question a couple weeks ago, when will parents know? How will parents know? So what happens is they have the ability to go into their child's Infinite Campus account, and they can look on transportation, and they would see the bus routes. Those will be updated by next Friday. So by next Friday, the new bus route information will be updated. Right now, what we're doing is taking it down off the website, because we have Versatran, another system that they have to match with, but those will be available next Friday. Could be Wednesday, but don't quote me, Friday's the deadline. I also want to let you know that the, we are looking at right now the middle school live streaming issue to not have to take place. Now let me explain that. The numbers of students who went from fully remote, our K-8 full-remote program, into the in-person program were such that it was enough that those that came back fully and those that wanted to go full-remote from a hybrid program, we were able to fit, as of right now, that's why there's a deadline, we were able to fit it in that our full-remote program run by our teachers separate is enough that we can take those, that we don't have to livestream on a regular basis. But the question comes up, well, you have three-foot distancing now, you don't have six-foot distancing now. The question comes up is what happens with students in quarantine? So it's going to be that there's going to be no live streaming except when the administration feels there are extenuating circumstances. And the reason why we didn't put the words COVID or quarantine in it is because what happens if David or Steve are in sixth grade and they have their appendix out, and they're out for two weeks? That's an extenuating circumstance, so they would be given, once the nurse knows, once the administration knows, they would tell those four teachers of Steve, Steve's four teachers, and they would be able to livestream for that duration. But we did not want to continue with it if nobody's there, because we want to state that the safe operation of school is taking place. There is a return to normalcy, as it were, just like hopefully next September you return. So we did not want to put something there that would allow for someone to stay home if they really didn't need to, or someone to just sort of take a day off and check in. So that is also what's taking place. One of the last challenges I want to mention is the Chromebooks. It seems to be that with the, as of today, that with the state of Massachusetts talking about MCAS moving grades three, four, and five to May to mirror what the high school is, we still haven't heard much about middle school, it seems that with the Chromebooks that we had scheduled for MCAS-only and the return of the Chromebooks that from those students in hybrid who will bring them back to use them, we should be able to round out and have class sets, so that teachers and students can still access Chromebooks and technology during the day. That then will leave that when that third-grade class, let's say, takes their MCAS, they will still be able to use that set for those hours. It should be no more than two days and two hours apiece, let's say. They would have the ability to use them there. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes, there's a lot of multiplication and division going on, but it looks like our challenge is a set. There's also been some concern about snack, like when is snack at the elementary schools and things of that nature. Those will be on predetermined, pre-timed areas for classes. So the expectation is, is that that third-grade class at that elementary school would know that they'll be spaced out over there at that time. That fifth-grade class at that elementary school would be, they'd know that they'd be spaced at that time. We, students will be six feet apart for lunches, there are still various places that students are going to eat in different type of spaces, but we're still sticking to the... are going to eat in different type of spaces, but we're still sticking to the six feet, because you have to obviously unmask if you're having a snack or you're having food. That's sort of the biggest challenges that we've been working through, and we have plans so that on April 5th, we should be ready to go.
The, just to go a little further on the livestream piece, so the decision to not really livestream at middle is educationally based, where we have found issues at the high school, because it's the remote option, it's the hybrid option, they were livestreaming all year long. Jeff could get up at 7:05 and say, yeah, I'll just turn on my computer and livestream my class when I should be in school. It's my hybrid cohort day. We don't want the middle school students to have that option, and there will be some protocols put in place for high school. If a student is committed to in-person, the expectation is that they're in class. If they're, they log on from home, a call will come from the high school office or from the council's office to the home saying, did you know that your son or daughter is home? They will be marked absent today. You need to provide a reason, because the expectation is they have a seat in class. We all determined that the best place of, best way for students to learn is with present in front of a teacher. So we're trying to dissuade from, I overslept, I don't really want to come into your class, but I'll check in. At the middle level, we don't have that as a remote option, so we are now just saying, hey, look, the computer's off in the classroom, unless deemed necessary, that will be our quarantine slash administrative purpose to then turn on the computer, because kids will be out. And we do have the option this year, and I would say this year only, if a student is out for an extended period of time, that the teacher will livestream from class. But we just need folks to know that. We are opening April 5th. The expectation is when you signed on to that sheet that you're live in person, that your son or daughter comes to school. They might have an ability to log on at home, but that's not going to be acceptable anymore. We need to do better, we need to have kids in class. I think I'm really happy with the entire team, teachers, from teachers to administrative staff to facilities and grounds, and everybody's pitching in to make this happen. All the challenges that we put out early, I think were duly noted, people needed to know the challenges, but we're superseding and moving past those challenges so that we're ready to go that first Monday in April.
Questions?
And I just, George, I just noticed Mr. Hyman, Lincoln Hyman, the new county administrator at Whitman is here, so thank you for the desks. You delivered, I appreciate it. Are you going to put them in place? But thanks, Lincoln, thanks for coming tonight, too.
Of course, you're welcome. You need help unboxing them?
Chris?
Just really briefly, I think just thank you for you, your teams. I know there's a lot of folks working really hard and probably putting in a lot of extra hours to try and get the kids back in school, and probably juggling a lot of things, so I think these updates are helpful. It's clear to me you guys are really trying to think first and then do things, not just do things and throw stuff against the wall, so just wanted to say thank you, appreciate the work that you're all doing.
Thanks. And just even out to the community, during this whole COVID piece, and I can't speak for George, but I can just guess, I'm averaging between 200 and 250 emails a day from vendors, from DESI, from DPH, from parents, from folks, from staff. It's just a lot of information, so if we're, if we delay on a response to a parent, it's not personal, there's just a lot of material, and there's a lot of junk that's out there, but sometimes the junk is actually a DESI email in disguise, so we have to actually read it through, because we have missed some things. So just, if you're emailing principals and administrative staff, just be patient, we'll get to it. And if for some reason we don't get to it, a phone call or another email is a nice gentle reminder, so I appreciate it. And thank you, Chris. I'd like to just move right into the budget and local assessment. We've gone through a budget, what we're looking for in district to support education for students in September of 2021, and a return to normalcy as best we can. Through our line item conversations and through some adjustments, we did, off of the original projection of 57,95598, we did make some adjustments to a finalized proposal of 57,572579. And I think, I can only say, I hope that the committee supports what we've added for increases this year. I know we spoke about potential federal money, and I believe that federal money is coming. However, tonight's the night, I don't have a check from the Fed, tonight's the night where you certify a budget. I do believe we will get some assistance at some point, but I would hate for this committee, my opinion only, to start taking things away without knowledge from both communities of what their specific financial predicaments are, and without the guarantee of what is actually going to be allocated in what I call ESER III from the Fed. And I do believe that, you know, I will be very honest, I do believe it's going to be significant, but I don't know those numbers yet. We did get an email from our executive director of MAS S today, and those numbers will be coming shortly, but I don't have them for tonight's meeting. But going back to the asks in the budget, I believe what we asked for is prudent, it's fiscally sound, knowing that both communities have some financial difficulties. I was on with the Board of Selectmen in Hanson, and I shared my numbers with them yesterday. I didn't share the assessment, I didn't feel it would be appropriate without you folks knowing what we see as the assessment to both towns are. They did not have any questions. I know most of the committee members were on the Zoom with us last night, and thanks for the invite. And I believe I will be, or we will be invited to Whitman in the future, if it's not next week, it's the week after. And I just need some clarity from both communities about what's affordable. We are using the statutory method only this year. That was something in our agreement last year. That's the number, that's the method of assessment that Mr. Tuffy used. But I would ask this committee, after some discussion, whatever we need to support, the budget proposal as presented, fully knowing we will have more than one budget meeting prior to town meeting, with more information from the federal government and more information from our locals, town of Whitman and Hanson, about what's affordable and what's not. Again, we tried to put together a budget, knowing it was COVID, knowing, not knowing sometimes what we might need. George and I have spoke, have talked about, you know, the need that once we get in, we might need more or additional funds for regression to address that, but not knowing or speculating and not being financially efficient is also, I don't feel it's a worthwhile venture if we're projecting and we're not actually going to use that. I think what we put together is a solid plan to improve our special education for our students, to get us back on a cycle with our Chromebooks, to also address regression, at least at the minimal level, and if the Fed, again, comes across with dollars, we will be able to address that on the spot with federal dollars without affecting the district budget. So that's where I'm at, and I would ask the committee to really look hard and support what we presented as a budget. If we can just go through the, I know the bottom line on the last page, Mr. Tuffy can talk about the assessment page as is, but looking at a budget of, I'm on the wrong page, okay, at 57,572579, the operating assessment to Hanson, John, do you want to go over the operating assessment?
Yeah.
If you don't mind. Because we also take out the non-mandated busing and things like that, so the budget off the operating assessment is 55,572579. Hanson's assessment would be 12,9392355. Whitman's assessment would be 16,59494139, or operating assessment between both communities at 29,558864.94.
Jeff, can you just do that, say that one more time? Hanson's is what?
Hanson would be looking at an operating assessment of 12,96392355, and Whitman would be looking at 16,59494139, .39. Total operating assessment of 29,55886494.
Is that different than received?
Yeah.
We've got different numbers.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, it is, I'm sorry. I looked at yesterday's worksheet, I'm sorry. Sorry, folks.
No, actually, you were right in this column.
I was right, I'm looking at the last page, right.
Yeah, on page three of four.
John, since you're right up there, why don't you do that, so I don't mess this up? Please, thank you.
Yeah, it's just a combination.
Thank you.
So let me start with, the assessment that was put together was done with the statutory method, and the method that I followed is one that I've used before, I'll be glad to go through it, and understand, my desire here is for accuracy. So this is not a policy statement, this is mathematics, and if there are any errors or issues, we can work them out and make some changes. Before I go any further, I just want to make a couple of comments. The first is the non-mandated transportation numbers that you see here are estimates, and I expect that they may change, and I expect they probably will change when we get better information about ridership. In fact, they're slightly different than what you saw before, because we have some updated information, and that's going to be subject to change. The total amount won't change, but perhaps the distribution will. The Hanson capital for HVAC, that was the air conditioning project that we had at the Hanson schools, that will change. When that changes, it will affect Hanson's assessment, it will not affect Whitman's assessment, because Hanson pays for that by themselves, and there have been some decisions, this will not come as a surprise to Mr. Stanbrook at Hanson, because they made some decisions recently about how they want to structure the repayment of that loan, and we will pass that through when we get the numbers. And finally, one of the changes that's driving the change in the assessment has to do with required minimum contribution. Overall, the minimum contribution has gone up $795,000, 795,538 exactly. Hanson's minimum contribution is up by $320,803, and Whitman's is 474,735. You don't need to write those numbers down, but I say that because that's made a difference, and the reality of that is Hanson has seen an increase in their assessment, in their minimum contribution of 46%, Whitman at 54%, so it doesn't go up the same for both towns. That's just the state numbers, that has nothing to do with me. I don't know if you're interested in going through this in any level of detail, I'll be glad to. I spend hours doing it and obsess over whether I got the numbers right, so. Where do the, where does the information come from? Well, when we get to the split between the communities, that comes from foundation enrollment that's provided by Department of Education, has for years, that's what we use, and this year there is a change. We, in '22, we had a total of 3,528 students, 39.34% of them come from Hanson, and 60.66% of them come from Whitman. When it comes to the revenue assumptions that we use, some of them are things that we decide ourselves here that seem to make sense. For instance, under a common revenue, we take interest income, we're estimating that to be $20,000, and we may actually be optimistic at a number like that. In 2019, we made $107,500 in interest. In '18, it was $85,585. In '17, it was $47,000, and at this point, and nothing's really changed in terms of our cash flow or assessments, or assessment collection, this year, through January, we've made $7,300 in interest. Now understand, this is following state guidelines in terms of what we can invest in, and I shouldn't say invest, because it's really bank accounts. It's money in, money out, so that's dropped dramatically. We estimate that we will get Medicaid reimbursements of about $100,000, and that seems on a par with what we have gotten in past years. Medicaid reimbursements being those students that we have that are receiving some level of service from us that borders more on medical services and educational services, and we get some reimbursements for that. We are assuming that we will use $600,000 in circuit breaker to offset the budget. Seems like a reasonable number to use. Last year, we used $700,000. School choice, school reimbursements, and Chapter 70 are all from the proposed cherry sheet that's out there right now, subject to change, as we all know. So that's where the revenue assumptions came from. Formula that, the spreadsheet, if you want to follow it through, actually comes from the Department of, when it was called the Department of Education, recommended method to determine member town's assessments in a regional school district. So it's just a spreadsheet of, that follows through the steps that they have. Following those steps, and certainly after the meeting, if you'd like to sit down and go through the steps, I guess I'll be shocked, but that's fine. We can do that, we can go through them item by item. When we get all said and done, sort of what I describe as the all-in operating assessment for Hanson is, is...
Fred, okay. Fred's not okay.
You all right, Fred?
I'm fine.
Recession, recession?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, John.
So let me stop for a second. The way we vote our assessment is the operating assessment that we have...
Take a recess, do you need to take, stop recording?
Stop for a minute and let, Fred, you all right?
Why don't we recess for five minutes?
Take, yeah, recess.
Let's stop for a couple minutes.
Not comfortable with this, yeah.
Ryan, stop. So we're good, we're good, we're live again, Bob.
Back in session. So if you'll look at the very last page, just to talk about what this means, is the total assessment for everything for the town of Hanson is $13,486,693.20. Now that's broken out into an operating assessment that doesn't include mandated transportation of $12,951,272, and then non-mandated transportation of $117,000. And I say this because that's the way we've traditionally thought about the assessments, as really being a collection of numbers. The non-mandated busing then is $117,000. The capital assessment for the high school is $277,465.2, and that's strictly the debt service for this building. And then the number that we all know is going to change, is for the debt service associated with the HVAC, the air conditioning project that Hanson had, of $140,269.46. All of that adds up to that $13 million number, so that's the all-in number, but it does get chopped up, I think, in people's minds, and when we, the way we actually send the assessment letters out, is we break that out. And Whitman's all-in assessment is $17,414,599.20.
So what do you want me to read?
This? Sir, well...
Our Chapter 70.
Yes, sir.
Was just shy of 25 million? Now, within the operating assessments, mandated busing is included.
Yes.
Okay, what, but our revenue for mandated busing?
Our rev...
The revenue for the mandated portion that the state pays?
The projected, the projected regional transportation aid that we will get next year is $697,269.
Okay, and what other revenue streams would go against the operating budget?
So they are shown on the second page end that says one of two, and that's where they've been laid out. And so the other items that go in as common revenue, things to reduce the budget overall, is interest income at $20,000.
Yeah.
Medicaid reimbursement at $100,000, circuit breaker at $600,000, and then there's the estimated revenue from school choice tuition of $246,000.
Yeah.
And charter school reimbursement of $124,000.
Okay.
Now, and for full disclosure, there are expenses that happen as well, and those are shown within the budget. So there is a cost to us for choice out students, and there's a cost to us for charter school out students, and in fact, there's a cost, it's assessed to us for some sped services that are received outside of the district by people that we have a financial responsibility for. That's a relatively small number, about $29,000. So those are the revenue streams that we have.
Okay, so the ESER II monies that we have been speaking of are not reflected with Okay, so the S R two monies that we have been speaking of are not reflected within this operating budget?
The S R two money is not reflected in this operating budget, and at this point in time, I think as we talked about a few weeks ago, really, our expectation is that that will, that will be used to balance this year's budget, um, to pay for some of those expenses that, that were unusual. In fact, a little while ago, the superintendent was talking about the remote program that we have. Well, that did not come without expense, although it was going to be expensive no matter what we did, and I think he suggested that it was about half the price of sending them off to, uh, the other remote programs that were available. Nonetheless, we have to pay for it. So, that S R two money is, is, I believe, uh, gonna, unless somebody finds some additional funds somewhere else, that's where the S R two money is going to go.
Okay, in its entirety, because I know when we were talking, there was about three hundred somewhat thousand dollars left.
We're guessing, based upon numbers to, to finish up to pay for remote, we were allocated nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It was a million, a million bucks, but we have to allocate ten thousand specifically for social, emotional learning. I think John's estimate was seven hundred and twenty-five or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to balance FY twenty-one because of our remote expenditures, and it looked like we were having about two hundred and thirty-five to two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars remaining in S R two that...
And, and that comes with the caveat, that when we had that discussion a few weeks ago, that was if we yell stop, if we spend no more money, um, on COVID-related issues that were unbudgeted and unexpected. Um, and we did freeze budgets. Now, I'm going to suggest to you that between now and the end of the year, we're going to find something else. Now, we were very fortunate that Whitman stepped forward and is going to pay for those desks, because we really did run out of desks, and, and I think, I would have loved to have seen the superintendent and the assistant superintendent trying to piece together those trapezoid tables, and, and I, I have a feeling that, that that would have been a great, a great show. In order to figure out how we could use them and not have to buy desks, but in the end, we had to buy desks. And I think we're going to find some other things. Will it, will it be all of that money? Gosh, I hope not. The other, the other part, um, and I was just talking to Lincoln earlier today, uh, we are still waiting on Plymouth County to process claims that we have sent in. Now, they're not picking on us, my understanding is that everybody is waiting on Plymouth County to process those, those submissions. That assumes that Plymouth County is going to reimburse us for all of those. Now, I, I think we played fair, I don't think we tried to skirt the rules and regulations, although they're being made up as we go along. So there's always the possibility that some of that may in fact be rejected. So, there's still some, some of that money, I guess I would describe as hopefully available but at risk at this point in time.
Anyone else? Fred, Fred, you still up?
Yeah, no, no, I'm just going through my head and trying to think of all the different, quote-unquote, pots that we've received.
We've, we've, I, I think we went through all the pots that were out there, and S R two was the only pot that we, that we looked at and said, gee, it, we've got some, some that's not already committed but has the possibility of, of being spent for us.
Anyone else?
And also with S R two, it, it extends, we don't have to spend it by July. We have a full fiscal year to spend it in case of, that was the goal of S R two, and S R three, I think, is going to go through fiscal twenty-four, if not fiscal twenty-five. So it's money that when, when we get it, we can allocate it in fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-four.
Chris, then, Dawn? Chris?
Yeah, so I mean, just getting back to the global budget, I think, um, I think you articulated it well, right? So, the focus on regression and trying to get back to where we need to, the focus on special education, the focus on the technology that we need going forward. Um, so to me, you know, obviously, we'd love to have an infinite pot of funds that we can draw down and have a whole bunch of other stuff too. But I think when we take a step back, right, two years ago, we, we basically spent a year on assessment methodology, and then this last year, we tried to keep the wheels on the bus, so to speak, um, as a result of COVID. So, I, I think there are so many pieces that, that we could look at in terms of trying to pull this together, but I think what you and the team have tried to pull together makes sense to me, given all of that, that backdrop, because I don't think you can just look at things in a vacuum. So, some of the programs that aren't in this year's budget, my hope would be, we probably spend some time, maybe in the summer, as we get towards planning for the next fiscal year, and really talk about what are the things that you would like to see, God forbid, we don't have a pandemic or some other crazy thing, you know, holding us back, and then work towards building those into, of the budget a year from now. So I think this is really good, given where we are, where we've been, and what we're trying to do, um, and I would, I'd support, you know, what you put together.
Just to add on that, Chris, I, thank you. I, I would hope to have a budget before July twenty-ninth this year, so that we could actually start looking at fiscal twenty-three in August to say, okay, what are our priorities as a committee here, and what should we focus in on? And I think maybe the towns will have a better idea of what, what, of school support. In the Maytown meeting, last year was just the push-off till July, and all we did was scramble. And, again, we, we put in the, in the line item, we have four teachers, thank you both towns for submitting, or, or supporting that effort, we haven't been able to utilize them in an in-person classroom yet. So we want to be able to put that in place to see what shakes, and then reevaluate our enrollment, re-enroll, look at what we have projected. I, I said to the committee, we're going to look at enrollment pretty hard over the next couple of months, and see what we can do within the school district budget, and then what we can ask the towns to support in the next two to three fiscal years. Um, it, it has been a trying couple of years, just with anomalies, you know, nobody talked about in, in FY twenty-one that we were going to come up with a new assessment methodology and spend from September to July on a method of assessment for the two communities. Now, we, we have that, it's settled. And the first year coming in, it was, the first budget we presented was, was shot down by both towns saying, you should, you're going to get nothing, so where are you going to cut from? And all we did was, was cut down. The goal is to better this district and move, and I do, I do commend the communities for coming forward over the past three years and supporting a, a budget that moved us forward in per pupil expenditure. We keep going up, I want to keep that trend going up. Um, and with this budget, I think it's, it's, it's fair, depending on what's approved by town, and then now, hearing from the, both communities, what they can actually afford, um, because we really haven't heard from them yet. I've heard different things, but nothing official, and I think, again, this is, this is the night where we move forward, and I appreciate, uh, appreciate that, and I think if we can get something passed this, this spring, we can start looking in FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, to say, within these three years, this is our priority, and we're going to get it done, whether internally or externally.
Oh, um, I, um, just getting back to what the towns can afford, and I know we haven't heard anything, and I was on the meeting, so thank you. I'm, as the chair of the policy subcommittee, I've looked at a lot of policies, um, so I just want to bring it to the committee's attention. Um, it's a rather, you know, mundane task, reading through policies, but Policy DA is fiscal management goals, so I'll, I'll just read a little piece. And as trustee of local, state, and federal funds allocated for use in public education, the committee will fulfill its responsibility to see that these funds are used wisely for achievement of the purposes to which they're allocated. And it goes on to say, because of resource limitations, there is sometimes a temptation to operate so that fiscal concerns overshadow the educational program. Recognizing this, it is essential that the school system takes specific action to make sure education remains central and that fiscal matters are ancillary. So I appreciate you putting forward the budget that you did, I think, um, we are moving forward, and that's important to remember. Our charge is what the students need.
Mr. Small?
There was a in-depth report, and I believe you sat on the committee, Dawn, uh, done by Mr. Madden, who looked at all the finances in the town of Whitman. And one of the recommendations was that the assessment of what Whitman could afford, uh, within their budget was an increase of five percent, or up to five percent on an annual basis, in the educational operating budget. Uh, you know, knowing what those numbers are, knowing what the growth numbers are estimated to be, what the increased levy capacity is for the town, you look at it and you say, how much of that portion can we reasonably be expected to get? And, you know, if you do those numbers, it works out to be about seven hundred and sixty thousand of the, of an increase for the, uh, school district. And then if you look at what the increase in revenue to the town is, it's probably about a million dollars. Uh, you know, so you're taking seventy-five percent of the increased growth, and they still have to worry about trash bills, increased health insurance, all the things we worry about, uh, you know, as well as all their employees. So, you know, to me, and that would be an overall assessment for the town of Whitman of sixteen million, uh, as opposed to the sixteen-five I think we're at now.
Sixteen-five-seventy-five-nineteen-and-twenty-two cents.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that's, you know, sort of the guidance that, you know, maybe we haven't heard officially, but we do have it in a report, and we do have it as a, somewhat of a practice that, uh, was published by the town of Whitman, you know, for that. Uh, you know, then I feel what really needs to happen, once we get over this budget season, we need to be able to sit down with the two towns, go over what our strategic plans are, go over what our priorities are, and have a very frank discussion of how we can get to where we need to be. Not doing it in, you know, March or April, uh, but doing it well in advance. I think the goal at one time of this committee to have a quote-unquote budget committee, you know, and that was probably six or seven years ago, I was not on that, but if it could have been more of the educational opportunity and what we need to do to increase the budget, and how can we get there? You know, operating within the parameters that we need to operate within. You know, and that's what I'd like to see come out of tonight, you know, at least the first step. I just wanted to, uh, say my piece on that.
So, so, I know Dawn and I served on the same committee with Mr. Madden, and I know George and I were interviewed, and I, I didn't hear, and I, I'm not saying you're incorrect, Fred, but I didn't hear five percent of, of an increase in the assessment. John told us specifically, school budgets average around five percent every year of an increase of the overall budget. And if it comes higher than that, you're probably out of line. But the school budget drives a town. So I heard five percent, and when we actually did our budget this year, we had that five percent number on the board to see where we could be based upon the Madden report. And I'd have to refresh my memory, and I know, putting Lincoln on the spot, he probably hasn't read it, so I'm not even going to ask you, but if the selectmen are out there watching and want to give me a call tomorrow to tell me I'm, I'm, I'm full, you know, and, Lincoln, if you want to come up, that's what I heard from him, and, and that's what I believe was presented, and I could be wrong, but I don't know if that's what you heard, Dawn, as well.
I would echo that, it was certainly five percent, and he was speaking from his experience in other municipal towns. And, um, I think the comment was also made that five percent increase to a school operating budget annually is typical, taking into consideration also where you're starting from. And we even know as Whitman-Hanson, we're starting at thirty-fourth per pupil spending at the bottom out of four hundred and something districts across the state, so even that five percent doesn't put us ahead leaps and bounds, and we know we're not adding, um, the programs that area schools have, just to give our students the same educational opportunities as these area schools. So, yep, I think that's been the trend for those schools and those increases.
I just want, I, I just didn't know, I had heard wrong, I just, because I know you and I sat on the committee, and, and again, putting you on the spot, I don't mean to do that, and if that's not what's in the Whitman budget this year, I can understand that as well, but that's what I heard from the report, and that was our baseline when we started formulating our budget as our budget presentation. Based upon what we have now, I'm looking at a four percent increase over last year. Um, so, anyway, thanks, Lincoln.
Sure, so, uh, I, I would encourage, you know, all the members of the committee to, who may not have reviewed that Madden report, um, you know, I'm certainly looking at it as a blueprint that'll be helpful, uh, going forward. I'd encourage members of the public to read it, it's on our, you know, Town of Whitman website. Um, to, to clarify, and I think, I don't think, uh, you know, on purpose, but there are, there are certain, I think, a number of, some misconceptions, um, in, about that report. So what the report speaks to, and I actually just reviewed it again, I read it, I think, I don't know how many times, at least three times now, the, what the report speaks to is that traditionally, the school, uh, assessment amount, year to year, has been rising at five percent. I, I, I think it's, it's sometimes the misconception is that that is sort of conflated to be, this is what it should be, um, but, but what the, you know, what the report speaks to is that, that it, uh, has been rising at five percent, and that a continued rise at that, um, level, uh, would necessitate in the near future, an override for the town of Whitman. So, uh, you know, we're not going to be pursuing an override this year, so, but, but I just want to make it clear about what the, what that report says, um, and, you know, and, and that's what it is. So, um, you know, but, but to your point, Superintendent Simonak, about what is available in the Whitman budget, as you said earlier, I mean, the, the school budget does drive the town's budget, because it is such a big piece of it. So it's sort of a chicken and egg kind of thing about, you know, how much, how much is available, well, how, what's your budget going to look like? But I would say that, um, you know, I, I think, you know, from everything I understand, I'm not, you know, uh, speaking on behalf of Whitman, not Hanson, but from every, everything I understand, that they're looking at a probably pretty significant override in Hanson in order to fund, you know, what's desired there in Hanson. So, I, I've said this, you know, privately to folks, and I'll say it publicly, I mean, the, Hanson is driving this bus, uh, this year from a financial perspective. As far, from my perspective, what is, you know, that, I think it's important to talk about a school budget that includes a number, an assessment number, for the town of Hanson that will pass in an override in Hanson. I'm not, you know, deep into the Hanson, you know, budget details, that's, that's not my job, you know, my purview, but, um, I, I think, you know, Hanson's driving this bus this year, and that amount is really dictating, you know, what, what the school budget overall looks like as far as just the financial reality of what's going to pass. So, you know, those are my thoughts in response to some of the items that came up this evening.
Thank you.
Chair?
Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks for coming, Lincoln, I appreciate it. Did that Madden report make recommendations?
None, none that I've seen in, in what I've reviewed. I mean, it's a discussion of, if, if, it's a discussion of, you know, if the, uh, you know, if the school's budget amounts, the assessments continue to grow by this five percent we're talking about, and this, and the town, uh, amounts continue to grow by, you know, typically about two and a half percent, um, that, and the, you know, level of services, both on the school and town side, that, you know, the residents have come to want, is, does that same level is, is desired, then an override is necessary? It, it, it really isn't, I think, super specific, um, you know, on the recommendations of the path forward, but, but that is the reality of what it reports about what the, what the future holds.
So what was the purpose of the report, of the, the study, and then?
I wasn't here when it was, I mean, I'm not sure I can speak to that, uh, you know, it...
As, as it was, as I remember it, it was, it was about, the, we were here, it's assessing the town priorities and how would they want to spend money going forward.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, I, I've been on the job for a month, I'm not, I'm not sure, to be honest, I'm not sure what the charge was, the, that's what the report says now.
That's what the report says now?
That's what the report says. It, it's, it's been out, you know.
I appreciate...
Hasn't changed, so.
I, I just, um, there is a significant, um, misconception then, because I think it's was reported that the Madden report did make recommendations, um, and so I'd, I'd be, you know, happy to circle back and, and read it thoroughly myself, but there is a misconception, if that, if that's what you're telling me, that there weren't recommendations made.
I mean, as far, as far as what the original charge for the report was, I can't speak to that.
No, I mean, no, I'm not, I'm saying, but, it's, the recommendations, it was, it was, it was, you know, uh, put, put out there that, that report... out there that, that report included recommendations for how, you know, how Whitman's going to, um, you know, budget their money going forward, you know? So just to be clear, that's been out there, and that's something I'm sure you're not going to hit the last of, you know? Yeah.
Okay. Hillary?
Um, I don't know if this is a question for you or for the committee, but I was just wondering when, and you might or may not know this, when was the last time Whitman had an override on the ballot and it passed? I guess maybe they're two separate questions, and I would ask the same for Hanson, but obviously. So either town, when was the last time they had an override that passed? I know in Hanson, there was one in 2016, I believe, that failed.
That didn't pass.
Yeah, that failed.
2012 was a $300,000 override in the Town of Whitman. I'm pretty sure it was 12.
Okay.
Uh, and that did pass in Hanson as well, so it was a small override.
So 300,000 for both towns?
Uh, well, 300,000 of Whitman, I don't know what it was to Hanson, and approximate.
Yep.
That was one.
Do you know if that was specifically to fund the schools, or was that a general town override?
No, that was specifically for the schools.
Okay. Has there been a general town override in either town in the last, that you, that we know?
Well, 2016-
Failed.
Failed.
And it failed in Whitman by 70-something votes, and it failed in Hanson by 2,000-something votes, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Thank you.
Dawn.
Um, through you, Chair, to Mr. Scriven. I was on that override, budget override evaluation committee. So I sat through all those hours. Um, I can tell you the recommendation or the directive of that committee, uh, more or less was how to avoid an override. So that committee, I was appointed to it in August 2019. It was a month after you and I had met and talked about the statutory method in July of 2019.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, the, um, Mr. Madden came forward and talked about Whitman's finances and how things could be, um, utilized best to essentially whether they would have or not have or need or not need an override, um, in 2020, because that would have been the 19. Um, so, and there was a vote taken at the end of that meeting, and, um, all the members voted no override. I was the one vote that felt like we needed an override. There, there was a need for services to be funded. Um, so if I may, I just wanted to share, that was my experience on that committee. Um, as, as far as saying, um, Mr. Heineman, um, as far as Hanson driving the bus on this, um, I feel that's a dangerous conversation because the towns have been driving the bus on our school budget for decades, and essentially, that's why we're at the bottom. Um, because one year, whether Hanson couldn't afford it or Whitman couldn't afford it, that was just the nature of the ping pong ball bouncing back and forth. And at this point, um, the committee has a duty to consider the students' needs first and put forth a budget that meets our needs, and the towns will decide how they fund it. And the FinComs and the boards of selectmen will make that decision, but I'm here to advocate for students and staff.
Okay, so what, what we're basically hearing-
Can I just, just a quick reminder?
Go ahead.
Thanks. Just as a reminder, and, and again, a point of, of reference, in 2015, we received a 1.6% increase. In 2016, that failed override year was .08. In 2017, 3%. 2018, 3.4. 2019, uh, 3.76. 2020, 3.76. And, and this past budget was 5.5.
That, um, can I ask a question about that? So those aren't to the overall assessments to each town, that's just the budget?
That was a percentage increase of the overall budget.
Okay.
Fred, and then I'm going to-
Yeah, and I'll be brief, because, and through you to Dawn, because Dawn asked the question how, you know, we're so far down in our spending. Every town is different. Uh, we're blessed in one respect that we have a far more, a far greater share of Chapter 70 money than we would otherwise be entitled to. So we're very much blessed because we get a good sum. At the same time, we're cursed because the annual increase in our Chapter 70 funds is so minuscule, under a half a percent. Whatever we do to increase our budget, our overall school budget, it falls right back onto the shoulders of the member towns. If you had a district that was receiving a nominal increase in their Chapter 70 funds, the impact to the districts would be far less. It, it's a catch 22. So, and I just, I wanted to bring that portion up.
Okay. So what, what, what our charge is this evening, the superintendent has recommended a budget. This number that we vote, once it is voted, can not go up, it can only decrease, it cannot increase. So the 57,572,579 dollars and 40 cents, once we vote it, we're stuck at that number. It cannot increase, and this is the recommended number that the superintendent has given us. Now, as I think it was Dawn just said it, or Fred, I'm, I'm hearing all kinds of stuff. Yeah, I got to hear it, and Fred, I can-
[laughing]
Um, you're right. The, the funding of what the superintendent says is, it's his duty as the superintendent, the chief executive officer of this school district, to tell us what he thinks he needs to have a successful year with students. And you've heard quite a bit about it in the last week or two, and we've met quite a few nights. So the three votes that we're going to take tonight, one is on the total budget, one is on what Hanson's number will be, and one is what Whitman's number will be. And then it goes to the selectmen, to the finance committees, comes back to us and see how the numbers work out. This is the beginning of sealing the budget process for the start. We have 45 days, that's why we're doing it this evening. It cannot be put off. I think last year, because everything got moved, and everything was nuts last year because of COVID, obviously. So we, we had meetings outside, we had all kinds of craziness going on, and the same stuff is going on. I know that a lot of, everyone in this committee has got frustrated at one time or another in peppering the superintendent with questions, I'm going to get into that after we vote the budget, um, with questions, and he's getting 250 emails a day that he's trying to answer. So I've got sort of a little recommendation, but I think we should move to voting the budget first, if there isn't any further discussion. So here is the first motion. Motion to adopt the FY '22 budget, proposed budget in accordance with pre-K to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Regional Agreement, Section 4E2, en masse general law, small C, 7116B, at 57,572,579 dollars and 40 cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Made by Mr. Boyce, seconded by Mr. Collet, discussion. Dawn.
Can I ask Chair a question in regards to your comment about the budget cannot go up? Once it's approved, it can only go down?
That's correct.
Where does that information come from?
That part, I can't quote chapter and verse, but John may be able to.
John, you have, you have the MGL on that?
I'm not chapter and verse, but I've heard it for many, many years, you cannot increase your budget once you have voted.
I'm not sure I agree with you, Mr. Hayes. And I think that, and I've heard that here a couple times, and perhaps we should talk to district council.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe that up until town meeting, um, the budget can change and the assessments then change because, because the budget changed. However, once we vote an assessment and it's certified by the district treasurer and delivered to the town, um, we cannot go up by any action of, of the school committee. It would take a town meeting action for that to happen. So I think we've, I, I, I think, my understa-, well, so I suggest we, we get this clarified with district council or, or contact SE regional, um, uh, regional, regional office at, at Malden to, to get a definitive answer. But I believe, in fact, up until the vote at town meeting, the budget is on the floor, it can be changed, and that will in fact drive a change in the assessments.
But it can be changed by town meeting only, correct?
No. I believe that you could submit a, a new budget, but I think we need to get that cleared up.
First, I heard, that's good to forget.
John and I spoke about this last year during the whole piece of that, and, um, I'm glad, Dawn, I'm glad you brought that up because it was something that we had discussed last year, and it was something unfamiliar to John. Again, sitting in this seat and sitting in the gallery, that's always been said and approved by council on both sides, both Whitman and Hanson.
Yes.
So we can check with that. I still think we look to putting forth our budget as, as presented tonight, and then we can come back within the next week or two to affirm that.
Perfect.
But we can send this off to the towns if that's the, 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 the goal of the committee tonight.
I know, Dawn, from, from previous years that I've been here, town councils on both sides have strictly said, this is how it has to go.
Well, then, then my suggestion is you listen, I'm, I'm not your attorney or, or the town's attorney, so I think we need to get this clarified.
But we have a district attorney.
Yes.
Those are the town attorneys.
Andy, Andy, yeah.
I think if we, if we present something tonight, I mean, that you feel comfortable with, and, and I call Andy tomorrow and say, you can actually go up, I think we bring that back next, next week.
Okay.
And we're still submitting something to the towns that they can then legalese argue about it, if, if we're incorrect or not.
Perfect.
But I would still try to put forward something so that both boards of selectmen can start to look at what you've affirmed as your budget moving forward.
Can I answer?
Yes, thank you. I have one follow-up question about, um, this, this budget process and completion. And, um, I, I'm a bit frustrated over the, the presentation of it and the, the lack of, um, information leading up to today. And I will acknowledge that all the committees saw our email that I have been requesting reports, and I appreciate you sending those out. And I know you mentioned superintendent, that you will work towards, you know, next year improving this, because it's been, the past two years, we've repeated that statutory method, COVID. But, um, I, I, you know, my reason for asking for these, and, and I'll, I brought this, because I, I have it. This is Ruth Dr. Whitner's budget book from FY '18, FY '19 is online, and all the information I asked for is in past budget booklets. So, um, if, if possible, if this is something we can move back to, we got away from it. Um, I don't know if you have the template available, but, you know, grant funding is in here, teachers by district, and it's on the district website. I know you've put it up there, it's on there. So, um, the nature of my questions isn't to inundate anyone's inbox, it's simply to get the information, to be informed, so I can vote on a budget tonight and have all the information needed, um, together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of the fifth, I'll read it quickly again, 57,572,579 dollars and 40 cents as the proposed FY '22 budget. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? What do you have, Michelle?
811. Right?
811. 811.
811. Okay, that passes. Now, the next vote is motion to approve the operating assessment to the Town of Whitman for the FY '22 budget in accordance with pre-K to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4E, parentheses 2, en masse general law, small C, 7116B, at 17,414,599 dollars and 20 cents.
I'll move that motion.
Second. Mr. Boyce made the motion, Mr. Collet, he seconded, discussion.
So Bob, just-
Yes.
Is that the right figure?
Yeah, so Bob, so-
John and I, John came over and-
No, I, I just, so the question is, are we, for Whitman, are we doing the total assessment or the operating assessment?
It's the operating.
Oh, yes, the operating.
Because I think you just read the-
You just read the total.
You read the bottom number. Need you to read the top one.
17, 414,599, 20.
Could be 16, 575, 19 dollars and 22 cents.
Yeah.
You read the total. John, you gave me the wrong number?
Apparently, I gave you the whole number as opposed to, as opposed to the, uh, so Michelle, who's going to help you with that, because I know-
So it's 16, I'll, I'll do it again, if the other numbers, Michelle, that you gave me, and, and- Okay. Mr. Boyce, please retract.
I'll retract mine.
Mr. Collet, I'll reread it with another set of numbers, I'm sorry, I had both sets. Motion to approve the operating assessment to the Town of Whitman for the FY '22 budget in accordance with pre-K to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4E, parentheses 2, en masse general law, small C, 7116B, at 16,575,019 dollars and 22 cents.
So moved.
Mr. Boyce moved, Mr. Collet, he seconded, discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining?
811.
Motion to approve the operating assessment to the Town of Hanson for FY '22 budget in accordance with the pre-K Whitman-Hi-, pre-K to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4E, parentheses 2, en masse general law, small C, 7116B, at 12,951,002 dollars and 72 cents.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Boyce and Mr. Collet, again? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? 811. Okay, so that's the start of the budget process, and again, I had two sets of numbers. Kind of finishing up budget, this is just a little bit of housekeeping. If you, if we're going to work better or cleaner as a committee, and this is to do with budget stuff, the request from the superintendent, or any request for general office, please go to the, please come to the chair, send it to me, I will share it with the superintendent, we're going to establish a timeline, because what's happening is, everybody's not getting the same information. There's different emails from different people requesting information, and it's not really getting shared with the committee, so it's coming out that everybody's not getting the same information. We will establish a timeline, maybe two to three days, because as you heard him say earlier, he's getting inundated with trying to open school and, and all kinds of stuff. So the central office is getting barraged, and they don't have enough people to answer everything, so we're going to try to just tweak it a little bit. Nobody's blaming anybody. We're going to tweak it a little bit and see if we can make it a little bit better so the information gets shared with everyone. Fred?
So if I have a question, I send it to you, I don't carb and copy anybody, just directly to you.
And then he'll look at it, I'll share-
Yeah, no, I understand, you'll hold it all, but-
I'll share with every single person.
But I'm not going to carb and copy anybody, it goes directly to you.
And the answer. In other words, so everybody's getting, getting an, an opportunity to look at what the question was, and then get the answer from the superintendent. And that way, everybody's sharing the same information.
Sure.
And it may be better when we come in as a, as a committee, we may work better and more collaboratively by having all the same type of information. It's, it's just, we looked at how some others are doing it, and so that's one thing. And also, you would like to know if we could take all day K and not discuss all day K, restructuring middle school foreign languages, and, um, also stat times until the fall, until we're through this cycle, and we start school in September, he'll have better numbers, and again, it'll slow down what's going through his office, because there's tons and tons, I mean, I get there probably out of necessity a little bit more, and there's tons of information, and they've drafted everyone to try and get this information out, but we're trying to get it out to everybody at the same time. And it's getting convoluted and mulled around, and it's difficult. So for better cooperation from the central office, we're trying to channel, make a little channel for it to go. Nobody's trying to shun anybody, we're just trying to channel it a little bit so it comes out better. Fred, then Dawn, and then Jeff.
You know, one, I don't know if you'd like a motion on that, and number two, we should try and keep our focus on what we're doing here now, not, you know, enhancing our strategic plan, et cetera. I think that's in August, September, you know, we sit down, brainstorm, get involved with the towns of where do we go and how do we do this?
Yes.
You know, for, and prioritize things. Uh, I, I think we should keep our eye on the prize, so to speak, which is getting through this budget season.
Well, that's, that's what we're trying to do, Fred. We're trying to get, like, a, a, part of it is, so we work better collaboratively together. We're trying to get, like, a, part of it is, so we work better collaboratively, together. Everybody's got information, it's how did this one know that, or how did that one? And nobody's doing it intentionally, it's just happening.
Would you like a motion?
Um, what, are you going to motion everything I said? Because I'm all right with it, but Dawn's next, Chris.
Oh, sure.
You know.
Well, let's hear from, go ahead, Dawn. Let's hear from everybody.
There's a lot of work going on right now, Jeff, and I understand that. And my requests for, you know, a future plan of possibly phasing in full day K, I mean, it's been on our strategic plan forever. So, the idea is simply, the cost came out once, the $800,000. So, my idea, well, what makes that, where did that come from? More importantly, the school start times, right now, we're in a bus contract, and I was told previously, can't look at the start times changing, because we're in a contract. That can be revisited when the contract's up.
We were in a teacher's contract, it's in the teacher's contract, that we can't change times without that. And we are in a negotiation year this year as well.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to correct you, it's not the bus contract, it's the teacher contract.
Okay, that's helpful, if we have the ability to change bus schedules, if a decision is made down the road, that we're changing our building times, and so forth. But I think that was my question, right? If we can't talk about this until the fall, what if the contract's negotiated, we're locked into something, and then, you know, fall, comes the fall and says, well, we're stuck into a three-year, we'll talk about it in three more years. So, that's something I don't want to happen.
I get that.
And when you talk about start times, this is not my own agenda item. This is recommended by the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. We are wearing masks right now because of the CDC, right? So, why do we pick and choose what we listen to in regards to healthy start times for all our students, that will support their social, emotional learning? That, that's, those are the facts. If that's not, this is not an emotional ask, or vanity question, or agenda item of my own, it's simply to support our students in that nature.
Okay. Chris, you were next, and Fred. And I'm not, again, and then, Chris.
I was just going to, you know, as far as channeling information or whatever, I'd be happy to be, continue to be included in that process. It's certainly up to you, but, you know, if I can help in any way, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
No, I was just going to say, we should probably be careful of anything, any areas that we delve into that could be contractual obligations. Whether or not we're bargaining it, if you wanted to schedule an executive, you know, for us to be able to talk freely, but I don't think we should be discussing anything in open right now.
Well, and that's kind of what I mean, like, if we just keep barraging information, we can have an executive session, you guys can call and say, to the chair, or whoever becomes the new chair, hey, guys, can we have a workshop, can we have an executive session to move these things forward? It's not like you're putting it off, they're just asking for a little relief. That's why I wasn't really looking for a vote. Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think everyone that's here has things that they passionately believe in, right? That's why we're here. So, there may be things that I think about, like, I'm big into early childhood education right now, and a lot of things that are going on with that, and there's a whole bunch of research and things that would support that. There's early college, there's, we could probably each rattle off our own three, five things that we think could make the district better. I think the balance we have to find is, you know, we hire folks to help lead that initiative, right? That's, we pay them a salary to help us lead that. So, we have to kind of strike the balance, I think, between making sure we're coming together, so maybe we can do something in the fall or summer, and brainstorm, but we have to probably agree for efficiency, because I know I could, I could keep Jeff busy for probably the next two weeks straight on early childhood education and pre-K stuff. I could give him enough stuff, that he would do nothing else than that for the next two weeks, but I'm not sure that that's really appropriate, unless we all agree that's something we all want to explore. So, if I'm asking a few things, Mike's asking a few things, Hillary, David, Jeff, the team is never going to get anything done. So, to me, I think the spirit, hopefully, is we can find a balance between the passion that we all have, and things that we believe in, coming together, coming up with two or three things, working with the administration on those two or three things, because again, I'm not an educator, that's not what I do. We have folks that that's what they do, they've gone to school, this is their life profession, and find that balance of, how do we come together, and then knock those out collectively, right? So, I like where this is going, I don't think it's, I think we want to be really careful, because we don't want to stifle the passion that people have to make the district better, but at the same time, we do have to have a degree of efficiency and effectiveness, or we're just going to keep, you know, we're going to chase 20 things and not accomplish anything.
That's kind of where I'm going, trying to get it so it's channeled in emotion, so everybody can get what they want to do.
But Bob, I guess where I'm going is, even if the, I think that's where you're going to have to potentially keep us honest, I think there's a difference between sending an email and saying, hey, I have a question, which, no problem if we channel it that way, versus, hey, I have a question, because I want you to research, again, I'm going to use my, what is it going to take to get pre-K, three-to-five education in the district? That's not really a question, because there's, you know, weeks of research that's going to have to come after it. So, you know, I think something like that, maybe that's where we have to bring it back to the full committee and say, hey, what does everyone think? Is this something we want to explore? Because there's just a finite amount of priorities and budget dollars to support these things, so.
Exactly. Like, if, like you said, if everybody had three ideas, and there was 30 ideas, you'd never get anything done. So, it needs to be determined if that's where the committee wants to go, as a committee, and that will take votes. But specifically, I guess, that's why I'm not sure, Mr. Small, if I'm looking for a motion, I'm asking more for a general consensus on, if you can funnel the questions to me, I will funnel them to Jeff in the next three or four days, because we just came up with this, we'll come up with kind of a timeline, maybe two days or three days.
It'll depend on the ask. I mean, that's the honest answer. If it's research-based, and it's something, I will be able to tell you to get to the committee, it's going to take me a week, because John's out, he only works three days a week, or whatever. And everything that you guys do is for kids, and I love it. I mean, that's, but, and this is a me statement, I'm feeling absolutely overwhelmed and swamped right now, between teachers, and their fears of coming back, and kids coming back, and the budget, and not knowing, and this, I'm feeling absolutely overwhelmed and swamped, and I don't want to disappoint anybody. So, I asked Bob to help me out, because I don't want to disappoint anybody on this team, I don't want to disappoint parents out there and kids. And another, I haven't gotten to a classroom in three weeks, and I'm usually out and about with George, two to three times a week, in classrooms, seeing kids, and we have not been able to breathe, because of budget stuff, because of COVID stuff, and reentry stuff. So, that's where I feel negligent to my people, because I'm supposed to be out there, working with them to make sure their work environment is okay, and I haven't been out in class. So, I'm asking, as a help to us, and whenever you folks ask for something, my team doesn't want to disappoint me, so they scramble, and takes away from their job. Everything's important right now, and I'm just looking to ask this committee to prioritize the needs in this budget cycle for FY '22, and then start going forward with what we have to do for our kids. So, thank you for hearing me.
Chris?
I think we certainly do have a need to move towards, you know, working better as a committee.
Yeah.
And I think anything that we can do to get there is a good idea. And you mentioned those workshops and things like that, absolutely want to see that happen. You know, it's, we need to strive to function, you know, effectively, right? And that's going to take us working together collectively.
Well, I had, I have reached out to Hardy, he's been busy, him and Dorothy Presser have had some stuff going on, you know, they can't just focus 100% on Whitman-Hanson, but he did say this week, he's probably going to get us some dates, and the second he gives me dates, I told him no Saturdays, because everybody, that was kind of the general consensus, it was going to be a night. We can do a governance workshop with them, it's free to the district, and that may give us some other avenues of how things can be done differently, but we want to work better collaboratively and collectively, because Jeff read one thing, and it's true, I see 10 people in this room, all committed to student success. They wouldn't be here donating, I mean, we're here Monday, Friday, you know, I mean, everybody's here to.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I mean, Monday, Monday.
Can I just add something?
Go ahead. Go ahead, and then we're going to move on.
I think that one suggestion that I would have, and perhaps this is just me, because I am in education, so I know where to go to get some answers, but for me personally, if I have a question, I try to find the research myself, or try to ask somebody where I could research things myself, and then perhaps come to the committee, or go to you and say, hey, I want to talk about this next time, or, you know, if we find something, you know, if you go on Desi website, they have the number of teachers in every building, they have the number of students in every building, they have a plethora of information, and I would be happy to show anyone the amazing things that they have there, but there's so much information there, that maybe you're getting emails about things, that like, it's a simple search on the Desi district report card, or the school profiles, that we could all do ourselves, there are 10 of us. It's just something to consider, because the information is out there, because it's a school, right? So, everything the school does has to be put there, and if you're looking to compare school start times, every school start time on the South Shore is on their own website, you know, so, there's all kinds of things, so that might be a suggestion as well, as, so then, because what might happen too, is you might become inundated with emails and emails.
All right, you know it's coming.
So, just a, just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's all right, though, it's good. All right. Chris?
Thanks, Hillary.
You had your hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, I meant Jeff.
No, I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point, and I think these are the types of things that we can share with each other, I'm sure there are other resources, you know, when we meet together in a workshop, and we, how do we want to conduct ourselves? You know, what kind of protocols do we want for our committee to be effective? And so, you know, absolutely, we should be sharing resources, but, you know, to do that here is not probably the appropriate form, we need to do our own, you know, work to make ourselves better.
We need to do homework, too.
Yeah, sure.
We certainly give the students.
So, I just want to say thank you for hearing me. I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate you hearing me, and I will be very upfront to say, when things are slower, or whatever, if we want to move the district forward, I just need everybody working together, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, the committee's going to vote to accept the revised 2021 school year academic calendar. We need to vote on it. What was the change?
The changes are those half-days, we added the half-days for the rest of the year, as approved by the committee, so we just wanted to make it formal on the calendar, so we just need formal approval.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Small, then Mr. Boyce. Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. We need to vote to accept the 2122 school year academic calendar.
So, as presented, we did a rough draft, September 1st is our first in-school day, teachers will report Monday, the 30th of August. We haven't put in the PD day, or the grading days, things like that, we can modify, but I know people, I know parents want to, when a kid's coming back, so we're looking at September 1st, 2021 is the first school day, hopefully fully in-person, fully ready to go, moving forward.
I'll make the motion, and then discussion. So, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Small, Mr. Collet is seconded. Discussion. Fred?
Is September 1st, I know wave of days late again?
It's the 6th, yep.
Is that enough time? In your, you know, in other words, you didn't want to come back a week earlier than that?
No. No, I think, I think, remember we talked about coming back even earlier in August, you know, and there was some dissension within the community? I think September 1st is a good start date. I mean, the one thing in the calendar next year, there will be no remote snow days, the commissioner's not going to allow that next year, so, at least now, the wind might blow tomorrow, and he might change his mind, so, but as of right now, for planning purposes, there will be no remote snow days. So, I feel very comfortable with September 1st.
Dawn?
Good question. Do we have the last day of school in '22?
Yes.
And it would be the 180th day?
Yep. June 20th.
June 20th.
That's with five snow days, the 13th.
Oh, 13th is the 180th.
So, we throw the five days in there, just in case.
Okay, of course.
Just so parents can understand that. So, it's June 13th, which I think is pretty appropriate to get out of school in the middle of June. It's not too bad.
Okay, any further discussion about the 2021 calendar? I mean, 2122.
Mr. Hayes doesn't say anything, we might not have snow. He jinxed us a few weeks ago.
So, what is the actual first?
All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike? Sorry. What is the actual first day of school for children?
September 1st, Wednesday. And the last day without snow is June 13th.
Are you, we, you're going on the, is that one?
Yeah, exactly. It's one on the smaller piece, if everybody's looking for it, small piece of paper, it's not the bigger one. You got that, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? That's the 2122 school year calendar. All there, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.